Father, once again, we just want to change and thank you.
Thank you, Father.
We thank you for your mercy, we thank you for your grace.
Yes.
We thank you for this meeting this evening that it be what you happen to be.
Mm-hmm.
As that you lead us and guide us and we'll be led by your spirit.
Yeah.
Father God, we bind anything that's not of you that you have free course in this meeting this evening.
Mm-hmm.
And Father God, you said in your word, where there's unity, there's strength. And we thank you for unity this evening, Father God, we thank you for wisdom. You said in your word, for any man like a wisdom, let him ask for God.
Mm-hmm.
We ask you for wisdom and understanding and
Yes, Father.
questions that need to be answered, Father God, that you will give us the glory, we give you the glory, the praise.
Yeah.
And Father God, whatever we do, ask you to bless the citizen of this town, Father God, even ask that you bless the attorney, uh, the councilman of Alderman, the chief of police, Father God, even bless the secretaries, the clerks, Father God,
Mm-hmm.
in the name of Jesus, Father God. And we give you the glory, we give you the praise, we give you the honor. And Father God, we ask you for these blessings, and Jesus, man, we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know this is not on agenda, but it's too popular, I'm in between days, out of control. Is it anything that the town can do?
Okay, I checked, I talked to other people that they told me they're gonna clean up, but I'll get back on it, see.
And that's more in the road in your arena, it's go clean it up.
Alright. Okay, for five, on the question addition, I need to make a change here, uh, for nine A, we need to do the mayor's update. Nine A, mayor's update. And also correction for the number ten recommendation to pay, uh, supposed to be municipal police employees retirement system instead of risk management. Give me that correction.
Say that again, Mayor.
Uh, number ten was a recommendation to pay, said risk management, supposed to be municipal police employees retirement system. Municipal police employees retirement system. Okay, everyone has it?
Mm-hmm.
Mayor, if it's Mayor. I would like to request that police business be added to the agenda.
Okay, we gonna do that for the nine B, and, uh, Dominique remind when we do the agenda, we just start keep putting that on.
That should be on.
Do you motion a second to a meeting agenda?
I saw move that we moved, uh, me and the agenda, we are adding nine A mayor's, uh, update, we're adding nine B, request for police business, and correction on ten recommendations for the municipal police employees retirement system instead of risk management.
Can you hear me?
Can I say one thing? You put the last one, leave it adjourned, you forgot to add that one there.
This will be number, number eleven.
Okay.
And the man that we add, number eleven, adjourned.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, we need another motion.
That makes a question that we accept the agenda with all the necessary corrections and additions. Say.
All in favor? And a poll?
I am. I do the, before I vote, Mayor. We got our
Yes.
packets a little late here, and some information that we, that you were adding in here. Really hadn't had a chance to look at it and really read it. So I'm definitely not like, I don't have to.
Another information, some information that we did find out today, that's reason why I pass out to the council that don't know about it, but
Well, I see that one letter was dated July the eighth.
What, what letter?
Which one is that, Ms. White?
Number three.
It's green, I'm sorry.
It was, um, did you be mind free? July the eighth?
I think that's what she typed about the budget, like, you know, that she's working on the budget, is that what that is? It's green? Oh, okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Yeah, that's, when she typed, it was July the eighth, so I gave a plea for this was being there. July eighth is when she typed it, but you get it on the twenty eighth, cause that was
But it should've, if you got it, mm, it wasn't in our packet that we got till today. It was in the packet.
Hmm.
No, it wasn't, it was a notice, the green one, I said.
But we still, we should've gotten it, so we could've read the note, but it's information.
Okay, but there was something that was sent concerning, uh
The budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then two with the other thing that we had going, the reason why it was right there, let's have them print it out. Anyway, the motion made by Ms. Neese Hood, the second by Ms. Florida White.
Yes, sir, I got it.
Okay, number six, will be approved or denied?
I made the motion, the necessary corrections, I, I made the motion, I don't know. I think Ms. Green had a question or something in between, that's why it
Okay, so with Ms. Hood, Ms., Ms., okay.
Mrs. Neese Hood motioned, and it was taken by Ms. Florida White.
That's, okay, so we on now number seven?
No. You need to dug on the number six for approval.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so I need to vote for approval.
I saw move that we approved the agenda with all additions that were
Say.
And to the new, and corrections.
Hold on a minute, Ms. Green.
It's about, from this question, it
Hold on, Ms. Green, call me, we gonna get to it in just a minute. Motion made by Mr. Neese Hood.
I got that, who's taking it?
Ms. Florida White.
Okay, okay.
Okay, will you call me?
When she was adding to the, uh, motion, with, with any corrections on there as well.
That's all I was saying, thank you. I did that on
He did that first of all, waiting to get the first.
Then you add
Get the motions correct, so we have them corrected for the minute, so we have that twisted around. Number seven will be approval for June twenty, twenty-five minutes.
I saw move that we approved the, the news. Month of ten. I second from that.
What's your mommy's call anyway? Second by Ms. Perry, the council.
I was I, I The minutes regular meeting, your approval, you have May twenty-fifth, but your minutes should show the date of the minutes that was taken for the approval, and if there's no dates in there, so this is all in the documents, and if you look there, and it's not there. So it errors up of that nature. It's, um, it's still binding. So I have to bet that.
And what was your reason, so I can get a good clarity on that?
The minutes is not showing clarity on approval date. Approval of minutes, like we got a financial statement, there is no date.
The date of, the date at the top, June twenty-third?
It has to be in the body of the minutes for the approval, and just like for the month of year.
Okay.
Well, we got approval of minutes and approval of financial statements, they say a May twenty-twenty-five, she's looking for a date, like May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Y'all get that correction?
Yes, sir, and, yes, sir.
Okay, we get to, um, number eight, the approval for June twenty-twenty-five financial statements.
I have a question on that too, I thought so, Mayor, when I looked through, um, our financials, um, you know, we need whatever finances and money that come to the town, we need to get. And I see for the video, there's no, there's no video poker. Um, Bright Speed, and those are entities that's supposed to be paying money to the town. Uh, Delta Utilities, they don't send funds in. You don't get no kind of resolution from them?
Not from Delta, no.
That's Centerpoint Gas.
That's Centerpoint, that's the
That's gas, so you, you all should be getting there.
Well, if you find one, let me know, Ms. Green, cause I'm telling you, you don't
I'm, I'm, I'm bringing it up, Mayor, so the clerk can research that, make sure that Delta Utilities and Energy are sending in the taxes to the town, because we have people that using gas, they're using electricity.
We'll check it.
And that's revenue.
They usually do it the first of the year, we'll go back and check it and see, the franchise, what's called franchise tax.
I have seen it on some other ones. They don't, they don't send it through all time.
Right.
No, they send it once a year, just like franchise tax, the same thing with energy, uh, Delta, what you saying with the Centerpoint? They send it, well, they don't send it every month.
What about video poker?
It shows on here, seven hundred and ten dollars that was made up to this point.
Monthly, yearly, quarterly?
Up to this point, it shows right now, and then it didn't come for June, but you see where it has been collected, same way as, uh, energy is on there as well. And it shows where it has been on
I saw energy, I saw the rest, but I did not, have not seen, um, the ones I called out, I have not seen
Delta, and what was the other one?
On any of it.
Delta, which one, I heard Delta.
Bright Speed. Bright Speed is on here.
And all the other, uh, cable companies, internet services, we're supposed to be getting funds from those.
We don't have a Bible.
But Centerpoint is on here, that's the second franchise tax from Centerpoint, you saying that's Delta, right?
Yeah, that's Delta.
That's the very second one, it says twenty-seven hundred dollars, twenty-seven, twenty-five point ten, nothing for June, but it has been accumulated twenty-seven, twenty-five.
And so you're saying that they come in yearly from Delta?
No, not saying Delta coming yearly, they coming in every three, four months. Like maybe six, yeah, you know? It's not monthly, though.
I haven't trained them even.
What she saying on page one is on this check.
And I will, that's what I was gonna do.
And that, that's what we need, any justice.
And also, on that, I'm trying to think about the income, uh, we have our, um, tax person that works here, we got property grown up, if letters are going out to these property owners, they need to cut their profit within the city limits, that the lots are overrun, on, um,
We know that, that's not on, that's not on the agenda, that's not on the agenda for discussion, we, we gonna move on.
These are some things that I saw for income there.
That's good.
You're saying you're low on income, and not getting money, so these are things that's gonna bring income into the town. So the people that own property, uh, if the, like, doing the taxes, sending out letters, if they gonna clean those lots up, that's how town can get money. You gotta charge them, they gonna get it done if the town do it, charge. So that's income for the town.
Just make a note of that.
And break it into, get it. Great idea.
Make a note of that.
And I have one other thing, also, I mentioned this about over four months ago, six months ago, about the CDC, I still haven't seen where the necessary paperwork has gone in for us to have the property on three-seventy-one, needed back to the town from the past.
And they gave it back to us, and they haven't seen any paperwork since last time.
They gave it back to, we, I'm gonna call down in the middle and see, we may, we may have to pay a fee to get it, get it transferred, whatever.
Back over to
Is this, what property are we talking about?
When you first come in, uh, when you first come in the coven
Right at the gateway side.
Gateway side.
They donating their property back to us?
Okay.
I got some paperwork now.
You got some paperwork on?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It got some transfer.
Yeah, but it has to be filed, it had to be filed.
Okay.
And see what the highway project coming from now, what they get ready to do.
I have a paperwork, I have a paperwork on, Ms. Green, I give it to the attorney.
We need the funds, we need that.
Donate it back to
It was the town, and it was a project supposed to go on there and get it built through.
I get what you meant there.
Out of the bunch of caution, just redo it. It was properly moved and seconded, and there was a question, but out of the bunch of caution, just call it back, cause it died for lack, like
Can, can, can we give a question and answer on here, so it won't disrupt what we got?
This will be me, cause I'm telling
But it's a standard anyway, if, if whenever there's a motion and a second, then it could be a question, but, or a comment. And then you just go ahead and move the vote on it.
That's right.
But out of the bunch of caution, because of the, the length of the discussion,
Right.
go ahead and call it for motion and second again.
Okay.
Approval for June twenty-twenty-five financial statements.
Who made the motion?
No, but
I saw move that we make a motion to approve, uh, June's twenty-twenty-five financial statement, after the questions and answers coming from Ms. Green.
That's it?
Motion by Ms. Neese Hood, second by Ms. Perry. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead, passes. Let's go to number nine. Uh, disapproval to add assistant clerk, miss speech to all the bankers' council. Uh, in that way, we have someone else to sign checks, instead of just one somebody, in case Ms. Parrish is not able to be here or something, we need to have this uh, speech on the council, she can be able to do checks, we need more than one person to be able, able to do checks, just have one person, so we need to add her on, and, uh, use of the bank, just let us, we got a assistant clerk, they use this, let us add them on to it, but now they just wanted to make sure that we put their name in the minutes, and, and show it to them.
I just have one statement I would like to ask, um, Ms. Green. Uh, your background is in, cause we never, you know, got a proper introduction of what your background was. So could you give us your background in?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm coming from, uh, Bossier, I do supervisory work over there. It's mainly in, uh, I would say like adult private city, in that area, but, uh, some of my duties did include clerical work, uh, scheduling, financial statements, um, cross-referencing with different, uh, companies at different agencies, getting things that nature, so that carried into my background, of course, my financial background. Um, looking over statements for some of my clients, I was just heard of some of their accounts, as far as their spending, uh, make sure their bills and stuff are paid on time, making sure they have their necessities in the house, and that nature. Um, I'm familiar with clerical work as far as paperwork, uh, like I said, communicating with different agencies, getting things filed on time, meeting deadlines, so it kinda cross-referenced this to vote.
Yes.
I saw move that we add the assistant clerk, a brief of speech to all accounts, and bumping the thing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have, uh, nine A, with the mayor's update, just have a announcement.
Uh, announcement on mayor's update, I think everybody have one, is announcement to the town of Cullen, we'll be having a town hall meeting, that's, um, August the seventh, which is a Thursday, I think, Thursday evening, five-thirty to seven. Volunteers for Youth Justice and Family Resource Center would be along with, uh, Humana, um, one of the hospitals, I couldn't think exactly which one, but it's a kinship and family support program. Uh, they are trying to push it this way, people that take care of family members, if a grandparent take care of a child, uh, if they take care of leases
August, what?
August the seventh, five-thirty to seven.
Five-thirty.
Here at town hall, they will have door prizes, uh, free food, but they wanna get the information out, because there is funding for people that are taking care of family members.
Amen.
And so we wanna welcome them in and thank them for the resources and the information that they gonna bring that can help so many within our community. You're not doing anything, please come out, tell somebody, somebody need this.
And if you need to fly, you can take it with you.
Okay. By Thursday, it's on Thursday, Ms. White. So don't think it's on Friday, I'm agreeing, it's gonna be a Thursday.
Okay, with this said, down to nine A, police business.
No, that was nine A, Lord.
I mean nine B, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I had an envelope here, when I sit down for Chief Rankin, and if y'all don't mind, can I read it? Thursday, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Dear Chief Rankin, I am writing your response to your recent request regarding the hiring of an additional reserve peace officer, and your call for an emergency meeting concerning insurance coverage. And that was a month ago. While I fully understand and appreciate your concerns, I regret to inform you that the town of Cullen is currently unable to proceed with the hiring of any additional officers. This decision is based on current budget constr- constraints, recent changes to our insurance policies, and a shortage of qualified candidates. As for the request for any emergency meeting, please be assured that the town of Cullen is already aware of the insurance-related issues, and is actively working to address them. At this time, we do not believe a special meeting is necessary. Like I said, I, I asked for a special meeting a month ago. I sincerely appreciate your dedication and your pro- proactive communication. I look forward to continuing our collaboration in serving the best interest, interests of the town of Cullen. Sincerely, Mayor Terry Hood. Then, this another one. Monday, July twenty-eighth, which is today. Y'all excuse me. Good afternoon, Chief Rankin, it has come to my attention that you have made repeated inquiries regarding the hiring of an additional reserve officer for the town of Cullen, and have requested the matter be placed on the agenda for the upcoming town meeting. While I understand and appreciate your concern for the safety of our community and issue I take very seriously, neither the board of Alderman nor I have received necessary documentation or information regarding the proposed candidate. I called you last week, Mayor, and talked to you about adding him on the agenda, you said that's fine. I asked you if you wanted me to send their names, and I told you, you told me, yeah, so I sent them to you. Then it says, specifically, we have not been provided with the candidate's name, application, references, or psychological evaluation. If I had known that I was supposed to turn all this in before the actual meeting, I would have. But normally, it's done on the night of the meeting. As previously communicated by myself, the board of Alderman, town attorney, town attorney Michael Kelly, the following requirements must be met before any candidate can be considered for placement on the agenda for hire. That's not right. All potential candidates must be free from any physical, emotional, or mental conditions that could adversely affect their ability to perform officer duties. Nothing wrong with that, I can go with that. Pass a thorough background investigation to ensure applicant is within good moral character and compliance with the selection standards. That's what I've been doing since I took office, January the first, two thousand twenty-five. Undergo medical and psychological evaluations to ensure they are fit for duty. So that means the town would have to go ahead and pay for it all, like you've been doing, pay for the physical, and pay for the psy- psychological evaluation. The last two, have completed a post, which is peace officer standards training academy with a passing score. Poses a minimum basic post certification after completion, which is necessary for employment as a reserve peace officer. None of this has ever been said. I was on the board back in two thousand sixteen, none of this. When you bring those candidates in, none of this, but I go along with it, because it's right. But these last two, you do not get that until you are hired. Just like I was trying to make y'all understand, the last meeting, at the last meeting, last month. You are commissioned once you're hired. Once you get hired, you then become commissioned, to get out there and do the duties of a law enforcement officer. Because when y'all hire them, you're commissioning them, and the next thing they do is two weeks from one end. And they go to work. But my concern is this one about the budget from Judy Moncrief, am I pronouncing that right?
Moncrief.
With, um, the CPA LLC?
She's the auditor, Ms. Rankin.
So it's not to Mayor Pizano?
To me, it's the CPA, it's Judy's the auditor.
Okay. And this is for the mayor, but it's saying here, I'm gonna read it. Dear Mayor Hood, at your request, I am writing to offer an analysis of the current income and expenditure of the town and the town's ability to hire additional police officers upon your request. Thank you. Upon reviewing the audited financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and subsequent years, profit and subsequent years, profit and loss statements, the town does not have appropriate funding to hire additional police officers. So this is going back to two thousand twenty two and subsequent years for me not being able to hire a police officer. In the current situation, water and sewer revenues are finding the police department salaries. In example, fines, fines, forfeitures reported on the two thousand twenty two financial statements were twenty one thousand six hundred and seventy eight dollars and did not fund the police salaries of eighty nine thousand three hundred and fifty seven dollars for the fiscal year. Please let us know if you have any questions. Very truly yours. I have not been told any of this at all. And when I first come in, I brought three. Charles Ezell, Katie Rankins, Reginald Ferguson. Then I brought two more. Can't think of the guy's name, but he was from over behind.
And then Drew from both sides. By the CPA.
But what I'm saying is it's not right for me to come in to the meeting and find all of this out. This is not right. That's not held in business. I should have been known about this. And this goes all the way back to two thousand twenty two.
And I asked about that, Ms. Rankin, and she was saying that's when it started. The police department was like, it was bringing a whole bunch of money in before twenty two is why she put the year. So I want to let you know that. That she was, she went back and looked. It's twenty two is when it started. The police could not fund their own payroll is what she's saying. And when I text, she go through that with a fine too calm. That's what she do, Ms. Rankin. And I did call you, I would text you earlier to try to deliver you some, um, paperwork. If you look at your phone, I texted you also too.
I didn't receive a text.
I promise I did. I came on my lunch to look for. I came to the school and you wasn't there, but I didn't know where you was. So I just come on back to the office. But I did text you. I can't move these right now, but I give you the time and everything.
Okay, I see where you're taking it. There are some important papers to be picked up at the window.
Yes ma'am.
But still, that's today, twelve twenty nine.
When I got it.
But, like I said, it's only right that I know about stuff like this way ahead of time. I should have known this when I come in. When I first took office, I should have known about this.
Kind of like after breaking the habit, Ms. Rankin.
Then you look at, here it is. All the events that we have here. So nothing wrong with it, but the town should be covered at all times. And that should be taken into consideration. It's twenty four hours in a day. Brian only works four hours a day. Then on Saturday, on the weekend, he only works eight. And I would like to be involved when it comes to the police department's business, because I should be. We got Froggy Bottom coming up. We got Froggy Bottom coming up. Just me and Brian. And y'all know how many people. And which that's good. There's nothing wrong with it. But I'm just saying, what about the power, the manpower that is needed?
Looking at answer.
I answered it. For the last eight years I've been here, Ms. Rankin, I have talked to the, the sheriff department. They have helped us tremendously every year that we have the Froggy Bottom reunion. The Froggy Bottom reunion have been going great every year. We hadn't had any fatalities, anything that's been going on that.
And they've never asked for two dollars out of here, just to let you know, Ms. Rankin.
Whether we have that or not, we, we should still have them there, just in case. Are they being paid?
They don't. They don't ask for a dollar, Ms. Rankin.
The mayor just not exist.
By the sheriff's warrant? We ain't never paid them, Bob, nothing.
No ma'am, let's correct that. Let's get that correction.
No, we ain't, no, no ma'am.
Okay. So if they're not being paid, still, why is it we can't get these people in here? In other words, we need to get these funds right when it comes down to my budget. Because I've been asking for it since the first of the year. I need to be included in on this, so I will know.
But when, um, when we are able to have someone, it still would be part time.
That's fine. That's fine.
We have, I mean, who have we brought in? Katie Le.
This guy right here, that's sitting right behind Mr. D.
We don't have applications or anything.
I have, I have it here.
Were we supposed to have that?
You are supposed to have it. We just not getting to nine B.
But what I'm saying is, we don't have it.
What I'm saying is, we should be able to have officers we need here in Cullen to cover the town. Whatever event it is that's going on, we should still have somebody whether, whether it's an event or not. We should. And this is Jonathan Walsh. This is his application, done background, everything on here that I received today. These requirements, they're here. But the last two, he can't do that until he's hired. Now I'm bringing this in just like I've been doing, and just like it's been done in the past.
Well, he have asked.
But I'm just not getting this today.
Just like we just getting that what you have today. But we have asked you in the past to bring the fill out, for him to fill out application out so we could look at it. Rank is representing her so we can look at it.
You have never said that.
Yes, we did the last week.
Because he has the information today, right? That received the information today, do your due diligence, then follow up from there. That's how you do that.
Do I need to make some copies?
And when y'all with their personal information, no. That's why I would like just keep doing like we've been doing. Because that personal information should not. And I mean, it's, it's just a law.
All right, let me see.
You got the background too?
Yes, this is the folder.
We need the background too. Yes. We don't have to. That's just the application.
Yeah, get, get everything, get whatever, get whatever that you have that's appropriate.
And then I have, uh, another candidate that was coming in. Uh, we, we really don't have to go into it, but the only reason she would come is because of things she, she done heard, it's street talk, yes. But it said that people here, well, they're not gonna hire me anyway, so I'm not coming because someone just told me about it. It shouldn't be that way. The town is not gonna hire me anyway. I've heard how they have said it already. They're not hiring anybody on Monday. No. Okay. I sure hate that, but I'm sorry.
Well, I'd just like to make a statement. Yeah, I know, I'm not even aware of the person we were talking about. And I think that's immaterial what you just stated about what the lady said. Because it sound like rumor. Uh, if she said that to you, and I can testify right here, I didn't even know that was existing or talking about this person.
Ms. Green. You let her talk for it, please.
She's talking, I'm just reading.
Well, can you let her talk for it? It's still, that's still not appropriate. Let Ms. White talk.
I can read while she talk.
Come on, Ms. White.
No, I was just making a statement on behalf of the mayor and the council. And I'm speaking, I know for myself, Ms. Rankin, that sound like a rumor, just street talk, but it's not valid. And I would like to be sitting here and receive that statement knowing that it does happen. But I'm speaking on behalf of me because of my profession is and who I am. And I'm hoping that everybody is, maybe not. But I want, uh, correct the statement about what you just said. I know for me, and it can be on record on camera, not on. I do not receive anybody, uh, degraded my character, my professional is, because I am professional and I speak professional and I've worked in professional areas many times. And if anybody else don't feel like me, I'm making my statement. I hadn't even heard. It is new to me. And I would like to believe and think that the other ladies on this board and the mayor, I would like to think that they are also. And if it's street talking going on, we can't stop that. But to make a statement that they done already heard, but they, the counselor ain't gonna hire me anyway. I had even I'm speaking for me. I had not heard anything about anybody else coming. And we saying we already made up our mind. Far as I'm concerned, that's an untrue statement on my behalf.
Okay, so that was under police business and, um, it has nothing to do with the town at all. You know, people are hired on the merits of what they have.
What they have.
So to end that, to end that, you can't stop folks from talking.
That's right.
Whatever they want to say, they're free to say. And it doesn't, it doesn't require a response. Some things don't even require a response.
That's right.
Okay.
We want to get, we want to get those, uh,
and she'll put them in a folder. If it's any privileged information, we'll, we'll maintain it. Let's treat the whole thing as though it's a privileged communication.
We're not gonna vote on it tonight, but we'll table it.
You need a motion.
Yes ma'am.
I make a motion that we table the recommendation from the police officer and to further review of the application and any other necessary information come forward from the police chief.
At this time, I would move to strike that motion because there was not a motion on the court. There was no motion. That was just a discussion under police business. It doesn't require a motion.
Okay, well, the mayor said, yeah, that's why I made it.
No, I'm saying, I'll just, I'll just clarify it. Because there, there was no motion on the court.
They need that motion, okay. It's just tabled, the mayor said.
Yeah, it was, it came under police business.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're gonna go with number ten, uh, recommendation for Mr. Police for your retirement system, uh.
And not resimanded, ma'am.
Not resimanded.
I was on the phone with you when I was typing it, y'all.
A thousand a month until they are paid in full for the back payment due from twenty sixteen. And concerning this number ten, we gonna have to go into executive session.
That's currently in litigation. That, that is currently in litigation.
We gonna have to ask everyone in the lead, the council room.